Good evening. It is 5:31 PM on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, and the special meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Slate Camp, Luke Ahmet, Amelia Boyd, Ben McQuarren, and Nick Palito. Commissioner Mose Dunkle is absent at this time. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As chairman, I would like to acknowledge for the record that the Commission inadvertently took action on an item at its August 16th meeting that was not posted as an action item. This action is therefore null and void, and that no other action items were taken as a result of the vote. Are there any general announcements from the Commissioners or city staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahmet, for the record, there is an action item on the agenda this evening, which I look forward to addressing in our old business, and I have no conflict of interest in regards to that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Alrighty. Well, the first item on the agenda this evening is a discussion in possible action on a request to amend 9-1-8-B-5 of the Sandpoint City Code, and I will now yield the floor to Commissioner Ahmet for an explanation of his request.
Mr. Chairman, let me begin by apologizing by seeking action last week during a agendized item that was listed as a discussion item. And in the interim time, I have spent some time in Section 67 of, to be specific, Section 67-6511 of Idaho Code, and that's where I would like to start this evening, as we return to our previous conversation in reference to amendment. And when we get into the discussion of my motion, I look forward for the opportunity to bring to the floor something that is so exceedingly important to myself, and the reason why I sit on this commission, which is housing in our community. There are a limited number of things that this commission has authority to do, and the Sandpoint Code is quite clear in how that authority is delegated. And to read from Idaho Code to begin with, it goes as such, "Requests for an amendment to the zoning ordinance shall be submitted to the zoning or planning and zoning commission, which shall evaluate the request." In regards to my proposed amendment to City Code 9-1-8, which would be changing the accessory dwelling regulation, Section B, 5, from one to two bedrooms as the maximum size, we as a commission have the authority, and from my perspective, a duty, to try to provide easy access or changes to address housing within the greater Sandpoint area. I believe, speaking for myself only, that there could have been an error when the city adjusted their ordinance from 650 to 900 feet, and at said time, they kept the limitations upon the accessory dwelling to one bedroom. There are many perspectives on how many bedrooms should be within 900 square feet, but there is code. And one of my main concerns is having lived in this community more or less my entire life, minus government-sponsored trips to a variety of miserable places, is that I am keenly aware of how conformity to zoning ordinances apply. Creating ordinances or having ordinances that create noncompliance, I believe, is a poor reflection upon our city, and it's a poor reflection upon our housing. I think we have an opportunity to be able to make a simple adjustment, or rather, pardon me, to hold a hearing, at which point we may make a recommendation to council, as is under the Aegis that is clearly listed in City Code as the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is that the commission may make recommendations to council at any time. And I look forward to putting a motion on the floor. I'm prepared to do so.
Excellent. Do Commissioners have any questions, or should we go ahead with the motion first? And the motion? Let's, yes, let's entertain your motion.
I move the Planning and Zoning Commission schedule a hearing for an amendment change to be heard by the Sandpoint Zoning Commission in regards to Sandpoint City Code 9-1-8, accessory dwelling regulations B, 5, from one to two bedrooms as the maximum size.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. And yes?
Are you scheduling a hearing for sometime in the future or for a future date?
I would rely upon staff to make sure that we do it according to the legal process as in the Sandpoint ordinance.
I had a question for you too, staff, and that is, is Fonda, I'm not seeing any Zoom machine. Oh, okay. Hi, Fonda. You are legal counsel here this evening. Excellent. Okay. Because my question had been, again, so that we don't run into a similar error as we had last time. Your proposal now had just said that we schedule a hearing. I thought from our discussions last time that City Council would request we schedule a hearing, and then we'd go back and forth. But no, just so we're doing it in the proper order.
My understanding is that we should request City Council schedule the hearing, that it come back after City Council has admitted, has had an opportunity to review it, but we can't initiate it here in this commission without City Council, City Council first initiating.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Based on what code?
It would be item code 6504/7, as well as the Sandpoint City Code 215 214/7D, as well as the bylaws within the Sandpoint City Code, essentially. See, the bylaws are resolution number 1-24, enacted on August 15, 2001, these are the bylaws. They discuss the purposes of planning and zoning commission, and they indicate that the commission may make recommendations to City Council, starting with comprehensive plan, but it's City Council that has to make the initial actions. Essentially, what the commission, what the commission can do is make recommendations at this point.
And your understanding may be different than that, but?
Well, Mike, there is nothing that this commission can do at any point in this process, other than make a recommendation to City Council. What I am seeking to ask the staff within my motion is to schedule a hearing upon whether or not, with this motion, whether after a hearing, our commission decides to make a recommendation to City Council. So at this point, my motion is to keep it internal to planning and zoning. There is no action going to City Council at this time. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm just trying to tell you what I think here.
Right.
Or commissions prerogated to do as they see fit, but I do think that it's in the best interest of the council to simply recommend to council to schedule a hearing and tell them that it's the commission's interest in amending the ordinance and letting council then send it back and ask the commission to take the next step.
So it would be recommending to City Council that planning and zoning hold a hearing on this change to the code?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion?
My, my question is this, why, I mean, because from what I understand, that is the normal way of doing things, correct? So I'm trying to understand why. Luke, you want to circumvent that, or?
It's not a circumvention. From conversations with staff, this is outside the norms of the normal process, because from my conversations with staff, it is not within the norm that Commissioners would bring items to be agendized.
Right, I had that understanding too.
The process that I reference, though, is that we, as a commission, go through the process before we even make a recommendation to City Council. We're adding additional steps to government, making it more laborious, making it more time-consuming, and we're just adding more steps into the process. I find that to be I mean, Idaho Code is, that's an understatement. And when I was going through the Sandpoint City Code today, and I haven't pursued this in a significant manner, is I don't see the manner for a citizen of Sandpoint to request an ordinance change, or to request a zone change amendment that's readily available. And so to see challenges with this, which to me, it seems pretty clear, "Request for amendment to the zoning ordinance shall be submitted to the zoning or planning and zoning commission, which shall evaluate the request." That is what I'm seeking to do. Evaluate the request, and after we have evaluated it, then we would make a recommendation, or if people find out that there's a lot of good reasons why we say no, people will vote and say no, and that would be the end of the matter.
If I may, at the beginning, the section that you just read, when it said that they would be, proposals would be heard by us, did it address where that is supposed to be coming from, or where it can come from? I mean, because I think what we're hearing here is that we're hearing that from council, that that request is supposed to be coming from the City Council for us to do that. And if a citizen wanted to do the same sort of thing, not on the commission, not on the council, they would go to City Council, correct, to?
Not entirely, Mr. Chairman. If, if a citizen wanted to make a zone change, maybe not a text amendment, but a zone, they go through the application process.
Or a code change. I'm talking code change.
Most items come to the planning commission through applications, through staff, and again, when the commission discussed this item previously about accessory dwellings, accessory buildings, there's consensus, we want to improve upon it. It's just, do we make one change at this time, or staff's recommendation is that, instead of making one change at one time, we address as many issues with accessory buildings together, so that we don't make a change that then has an impact that we have to then change after the fact?
Okay. Further discussion, Commissioners, on how we think we should proceed?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I guess, please, my frustration is with the process that we're talking about here. It's very, it's not clearly defined for us how we enact change. And I understand comprehensive change, but I also understand that that takes a long time to do. As I said, that's my frustration, is that I think we have a very small nugget of information that we can make a large impact with now versus waiting six months to a year when we get to that point where we have that comprehensive big thing to push through the system. I would like to understand, what is the step that we need to take today to be able to move this through, to amend the text in the code? What is the step that we need to do today to take that action? Can somebody clearly articulate what step 1, 2, 3 is, and then text amendment happens?
I think I can do that. This is, I understand this is
Please.
is, there's no question about that. It was laborious for me to read these statutes. Try to come up with an answer to that exact question today.
And that's probably our biggest problem. We've got too many statutes, and too many layers, and too much stuff.
Tell me about it. I think what the, what the commission can do today is recommend to City Council to refer to the commission, whether or not the commission should review the provision of the ordinance. I think that's what the commission would do today. It's not the commission's prerogative to initiate this type of stuff, and that's kind of the hangup that we have.
But isn't that what we're going to do? We are going to, we are going through, and we've been looking at the text, and we are going to make a recommendation to council what to change on that. So how is this any different than what we're looking at from the comprehensive plan?
It might be form over substance. That might be what we're doing here, but it's important to do it correctly. And that's
I don't understand what that means, form over substance.
This is, this is an unnecessary step, but it's following the law, and it's important to follow the law. Even in 6511, which was cited by Commissioner Ahmet, it said that things will be submitted to the commission for review, submitted by, it's submitted by the council, and by City Council. And so that's the process that we're at right now, where the commission cannot initiate this type of information, it needs to be submitted by the council. So we're saying, hey, council, please initiate this, and then it will come back to us, and it is laborious, and that's what.
So it would be, man, it could be a possible amendment to that motion, that we are requesting City Council to have us hold a hearing on this change to code at the earliest possible convenience.
City Council sends it back, and we're
And City Council might love the idea, and they might not, you know, it depends on were they, how involved were they, and do they think this one item is worth treating outside of the whole accessory dwelling ordinance when that comes up? But in order, so I guess that's in discussion. It would seem to me that the fastest way forward, which is still really slow, is to go by the steps that council is telling us, that's what we should do, request to City Council for us to hold a hearing on changing this amendment, and then changing this, this ordinance.
And then they send it back to us.
And then we have a public discussion.
We have a public discussion.
Yep.
And then
Because the citizens might not like it either.
And then we vote on it based off of that discussion.
Correct.
And then it goes back to the City Council to actually
For a second, public opportunity for participation.
Right. And then if they vote to approve the amendment, then it would actually happen.
So it is laborious, but the other side of it, it does give at least two opportunities for the citizenry to engage and see if they think it's a good idea or not.
Sounds fair enough, as long as we know the process.
Yeah.
Which now we know.
Now we know.
It's always a too public hearing.
Other discussion?
No.
Could you repeat the motion, Luke?
Well, are we referencing, I have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, but now Chairman Hastings is referencing a potential amendment?
Yes.
Correct.
What is the amendment to the motion?
The amendment to, let's hear the emotion.
My motion is to move that the Planning and Zoning Commission request for amendment to this, or shall evaluate the request to determine a amendment for Sandpoint City Code 9-1-8, and hold a hearing to do so at its earliest convenience for accessory dwelling regulations B, 5, from one to two bedrooms as the maximum size.
And so the, this is an appropriate time for an amendment, correct? If we, so a potential amendment would be just at the beginning of that motion to add that this is a recommendation, this is a request of City Council to ask Planning and Zoning to hold a public hearing for that purpose. And any other discussion? Well, I would, I would make that amendment to the motion, is it just that we add at the beginning of that, that this is a request of City Council to Planning and Zoning Commission to hold a public hearing, and then that?
Because that's the appropriate step to take.
That's our understanding at this point, yes. And last time, we tried to move a little faster, but it, we found out that was not in compliance. Yeah, it was not in compliance, so we're here doing it again.
Is there support for the amended?
Is there, well, do we have a second? That's what we would need, correct? Do we have a second for my amendment? We have a second?
Can I second his amendment if I already seconded the first?
You can second them all. So do we have?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have discussion on the amendment then?
No, I believe that's the appropriate action to take, and that's what we should do, is go through proper chain of command, going through council.
So is somebody rewriting the amendment?
It's, it's going back to my amendment from last week. I've got it on paper.
Okay.
Just to be helpful.
Thanks. Just so we're all clear. Don't want to be talking about this next time we meet.
There you go.
That we, that we screwed up the process.
Again. You're all fired. Go home. The, so the meat of the amendment is that we will be requesting those Sandpoint City Council to request that we, the Planning and Zoning Commission, hold a public hearing for the intent of changing City Code 9-1-8-B-5 to allow, however, to allow two bedrooms, not changing square footage, but just to allow two bedrooms within the current 900 square foot maximum size. Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. I will just check here. Bow star, because I usually don't. I'll say yes. Nick?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Five to one. Thank you. Let's see. So new business then is a development status update, and I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twicken for that update.
Chairman, what I wanted to go through, because I realized, you know, we have these development applications they go through, they move on, then they go to City Council. And so I just wanted to give you an update, a status update of some developments that have gone through, probably before most of you were actually on the commission. So you may have followed it in the news or whatever.
Just as a sidelight to that, if I may, four years, I think, is how long I've been here, and one of the first ones that I voted on broke ground last week.
Was it Samuelson?
No, no, it was the one on Cedar.
Ridge at Cedar?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
At any rate, just, that's just for, that's just for context, for context to it.
Because they do, from the time you approve them, it takes quite a while for them to actually come out of the ground. And for those of you who read the Leland Report, that talked about all of these pipeline projects. So some of those I'm going to be talking about, some of them, in that study, some of those are just conceptual. People have come in and talked to us, they have abused property, they kind of have an idea. But what I'm going to go through with you now are previously recently approved developments. Well, I'll just start from there. So Samuelson Place is 139 multiple-family income-restricted dwelling units. Forty-eight of those are for senior citizens, and that is at the north end. That's this dot up here. So that was approved in 2020, I believe, and it's just taken a long time, but they are actively constructing now. So that is underway. The Ridge at Cedar, which is a 20-unit multi-family, three and four-unit buildings, that is this dot. So that's an additional 20 units, and they are starting on that. Madison Meadows is a 10-lot single-family development, that is this dot, and that is actually going to City Council for final flats. So once the final flat is approved, then they can actually start constructing houses, and that is scheduled to go September 7th to City Council. Culvers Crossing, you're all well aware of, they have started their infrastructure. So they are here. And then also on Boyer, Boyer Meadows was a 21-single-family development, and that is this dot. So these are all now under construction. The next group of developments are developments that you are not, that don't come to you, because the code does not require, the code actually has quite a few approvals that staff reviews, and we generally have a back-and-forth process with the applicant, making sure we have the application right and compliant with code. So these are some other developments that are likely to be starting in the near future. So the first one is the Lights Out site. Some of you are familiar with this. This is 102 units on Ontario. So just before you get to Division.
And ownership or rental?
Those would be rental units. Homestead Village is 108 units between Ridley and Park Place. So that is here. 424, I'll skip Maine and Cedar. 424 South Olive is, whoops, just north of the Lutheran Assisted Living Complex. So that's another 24 multi-family. I believe that's going to be a condominium development. Then Maine and Cedar Lofts is 32 multiple-family units, right where Cedar and Maine kind of split off. And then Millbraith is a nine-unit multi-family on a very small triangle here. Nope, sorry, here. So as you can see, we will be having a lot of multiple family. There's a lot of multiple family in the works. And then I finally wanted to let the commission know, your September 20th meeting, University Place Base 4 will be coming forward. And this is a multifaceted application. It is a request for a planned unit development, but as, as part of it, it's a rezone from, this whole parcel is on single-family. The request is to rezone it to multiple family to have a, they are coming forward. If you recall, on Culvers Crossing, a typical PUD process, you go through preliminary development plan, it's that approval and concept. They go, they make changes, they come back, and then a spinal development plan. But there is a provision in the code that they can combine those two and come to the commission once, and that is what they are doing. So it is a combined preliminary and final development plan, it is a rezone, and then there is a preliminary plat. The mix of multiple families, there are single-family attached townhouses similar to Culvers Crossing. There are duplexes, and then there is also for multiple-family buildings. So this is a very large planned unit development. Again, it's
And, and all of those are ownership? And, and all of those are ownership?
No, they will not all be ownership.
Are they all rental or it's a mix?
Uh, I believe the townhomes will definitely be um, owner occupied. The multifamily will definitely be rental, and I'm not sure about the kind, the duplexes. Uh, so that will become that. We uh, have had the application for quite a while. We've been going through the code compliance review, and we anticipate that will be ready to schedule a hearing for your September. So that's the biggest one on the horizon. So there's two hundred and twenty-seven. You've got two hundred and sixty about um, in a large part along the US two corridor. And then you have a mix of single-family, multifamily currently under construction. So um, just wanted to you know, bring the commission up to speed on the things that are going on. Um, I know we talk about things and then they don't come out of the ground, but there is a lot of interest still in development.
University Place Phase Four, that is also the final phase, correct? That's all the property will then be developed.
This would be the last.
Yeah.
Approval, right. I mean, that'll, it'll be preliminary plat um, and the PUDs, but yeah, that's the last unplanted parcel. So.
Amy, thank, thank you for doing that. That's helpful to see that. Appreciate it. Is there, can we get a copy of that? Thank you.
And it, it's been very evident driving around town that a lot of these projects have started. I mean, it's, it's like there was lots of things approved and nothing happening, but boy, in the last month or so, things are happening, so.
Boyer Avenue has a lot of utility now. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Do you have any questions for city staff?
No.
All right.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Um, maybe I missed it, but last week I asked for the deck from um, whoever our guest was.
Oh, that's the um, the PowerPoint from.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. She did send it to us and we have it, so we'll send it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Okay. With no further business before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at six oh three PM. Thank you all.